January 20, 2015 Village New Falls Planning Board Meeting. My name is Maurice Whiteman, I'm the Chair. Other members present this evening are Liz Harsho, John Litten, Rich Stephens, Michael Zerlin. Our Village Board Trustee Liaison, Mr. Rocco, Tom Rocco's in the... And our Planner, Director of Planning, Ms. Brenda White is here as well. Our Secretary is Broken Rose O'Donnell. We have no applications to review this evening. We have some minutes from the last meeting to approve the draft minutes, and we have a continuation of a discussion of design standards. I would like to make a motion to accept the draft minutes from January 6, 2015 as submitted. We can talk about it in the discussion phase of this. Do I have a second to approve this?
Sure.
Okay, any discussion? Any corrections or comments that you would like to make? Hearing none, may I have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much. The rest of the evening will be spent discussing the design standards that we've been speaking about for the last few months, and that Bren has been working on pulling things together for that. Broken, do you want me to sign that?
Yeah.
So Bren, you have a dog and pony show and a tilted thing too.
A little bit, yeah.
So, would you like to lead the discussion?
I would. First, I want to talk about the design standards that I emailed you out this week. So what I did was, we've been looking at four or five examples, mostly in New York State, but a couple around the country, of design standards that we were using as kind of a springboard as to if we liked them or not. And we've had a couple conversations about a couple things that we liked enough. So I went through and took most of them, I'm 85% done, pulled up these stuff that I thought was applicable to New Falls, and put it in this document. There are a couple sections, you can see landscape guidelines or landscape standards and lighting standards. We have those already as guidelines and standards in our code, so I thought we could just start by deploying exactly what we already have, and then go from there. So I kind of wanted you to, and you may not have a chance, because we only have four or five days of it, go through it and tell me if there's something you don't like that we want to pull out, or if there's something that I'm missing that we need to add back in. So, did anybody have a chance to read through this?
Sure.
What'd you think?
Thank you very much for doing it, it's a good start. I had a couple of comments, under the principles of this vision, I was wondering if we might also want to explicitly talk about sustainability, and there's probably more detailed ways to go after that. But, that would be one comment there.
Great.
I also, on my version, I grabbed a couple of the illustrations that were in some of the diagrams, which I think is really helpful.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, a couple I'm looking at now has to do parking in the rear and things like that. So I think it would be great to include those, or our versions of those. I also, with that in mind, I was looking at the B3 code that's online, the North Chestnut Street Gateway District Code. And there was a version of it that did have drawings, but I didn't see that in the E-code. Is that...
It's not in the E-code unfortunately, and I don't know, I don't even know if it's in the hard copy code. I know that I saw, is that what I asked you about last meeting? There was...
Was it approved with the... That's the, I guess that was my question.
Yeah, there was a report that had code-looking, code-like-looking verbiage and presentation, that had pictures in it. I've seen it, I don't have it.
I was looking for that, and I failed so far.
Mr. Rocco?
Well, I believe that if I go back home and I go looking, I will find one. I know that when I was Chair of the Comprehensive Plan Review Task Force, we had exactly that with drawings.
Right.
That were fairly comprehensive.
Yes.
There were not just a suggestion or two, but there were pages of drawings with design ideas or guidelines.
Right.
And the committee, the task force that I was chairing, recommended that they be included. I'm not certain that they were, so I don't know the answer to Michael's question. Were they included before the Village Board's pass?
And, may I, I'm sorry Tom, are you done?
That's it.
Okay. I'd like to back up.
Except that I promise I will go look for what I had, and I will find if there is one that I still have, and I'll give it to you.
And if there's an electronic version of it, that would be sweet, but I understand that that's... Okay, so I'd like to just back up a bit, and say that we were looking for, or some of us were talking about, looking for making changes to our code that would include design considerations where they do not exist today. And that is so we could have more of an impact on the future look of our village. And many of the, or a lot of the wording here talks about guidance and so on. And I don't know, I have not involved George in our attorney, George Odenhausen, in any of these meetings, wanting to save the expense of his time to go over this for when we have something more substantial to show him. I did speak to him about this document that Bren sent out last week. And I asked him to look it over, and he did. He said he would send us something about it. His concern was, he wasn't sure whether they were guidelines or actual code, and he thought that the examples that you picked were good legal... But it has to tie into our code in order to make it coherent.
That may be my fault, that it seems confusing. A lot of the examples that we had actually were guidelines. And I thought that we didn't, we had guidelines that we don't really use. So, we wanted something with more teeth to it. So I tried to go through and change the wording from guidelines to standards, and if I missed some and it was confusing, that was my fault.
Yeah, well, I mean, the point is that we want to be able to, beyond make suggestions to a developer, we want to be able to influence the outcome more directly, so that we can give several examples of things that we want here, and several examples of things that are not good for us. And it's up to them to figure out a way to modify their, or to present their proposal to fit those. And if we call them standards, and if the code says we can do it, we're set. But I did want George to look at it in that regard, to make sure that what we're doing will have the desired effect. So, sorry to interrupt.
No problem. Any other comments on what we've got so far? So, illustrations were totally on my list, and I didn't get there.
Okay, I have a couple other things that I pulled from that. Minneapolis, is that how I say it?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
They had some language about signs, and I guess it's mostly in commercial areas, direction. Public information, signs should be designed and organized so it can be legible, appropriate, and cluttered. Seems like one would have it. Again, that's more for like our streetscapes. And then similarly, utilities, I mean, good luck with this. All utilities shall be underground, that would be lovely.
I thought that was a tough one.
But, no, you know. And then also from them, there was one that I thought was pretty good in terms of building layout. Just a comment about buildings should be designed to take advantage of natural light and fresh air circulation. And this in particular. Higher floor-to-ceiling dimensions increase daylight penetration and air circulation. Buildings less than 60 feet deep have reduced heating, cooling, and lighting. Buildings should be designed for long-term adaptability and changes in use.
Right.
Generally, all good stuff. Thanks.
Yeah, I didn't get to spend as much time with it as I would have liked, but I do, I really enjoyed looking through the other municipalities' stuff to see how they did it. And, you know, I, as I think I might have told you 50 years ago or so, 55, Otis County, I went to Hofstra, which is right next to Farmingdale. And it looks a lot different now than, I haven't been back there, but it looks a lot different now. So it's good to see that a place has kind of, it had some real character in pockets, and then it had some things that were not so nice. But it looks like they've corrected many of the things that were a problem there. And I don't know how, how to do it, but... So anyhow, I'm grateful to see other examples that are good. And I wonder if this is a good time for me to... Michael mentioned at the last meeting that he was trying to speak to Jeff Lowden.
I'll be speaking with him tomorrow.
Good. About the town's participation in our comprehensive plan, or the joint, whatever that is. And I, and that was at the last meeting. And Michael asked, said something about speaking with Mr. Calamano, the Chair of the Town Planning Board, and I told him that I was going to be seeing him the next night at the Hofstra County Planning Board meeting. And we couldn't speak that night, but we spoke the next day. And he is interested in doing this. We also had been speaking about doing a joint meeting in general, just as a good thing to do something once a year, or just to... And he asked what kinds of things would I like to have included in a joint meeting. And I mentioned the joint for the comprehensive plan update, and I told him that we would discuss it to see what else there was. He was interested in talking about the B3, which is now called, what is it?
North Chestnut.
Gateway District, yeah. Because they want to do something to update their piece north of that. So it would be good to have it more cohesive.
Absolutely.
So what we suggested, or what we are hoping to do, is to find a date when we can both meet at an off-time. Now, we can't project what our applications are like. We could have a meeting like this where nothing happens, and we could have one where we've got two or three applications to deal with. They are now working on one action meeting a month, and one overhead, or, sorry. One, you know, discussion, non-application. And so, it would be the third Monday, or fourth Monday? I think it's the fourth Monday, but I could be wrong about that. And since our meetings can be either way, then it doesn't make sense to do it on a night when we have a meeting. But I was wondering if you all would be agreeable to going to a town off-application meeting, which I believe is the, I'll just look it up. I believe, well Broken, perhaps you can do it? Let me look on the town website to see when the planning board meets. But I would suggest that we go to one of those meetings. And he said that he would be happy to do that, to devote one of his meetings to the joint meeting with us. And he suggested March, and maybe even April, February, he said was already booked up with something. He's, and he's not going to be here for the January meeting. So, I'd like to, once you find out the date, I'd like to suggest that we try to make it for that Monday.
It looks like they meet on the second and fourth Monday at 7:00.
So it would be the fourth Monday of March, which is what?
The fourth Monday in March is the 23rd.
Okay, and what is it for April?
It is the 27th.
27, okay. So if each of you can let me know what your availability is for those two dates, we'll see if we can, we can tell him soon, and we'll make that happen. Also, you would like to give me ideas of what kinds of things you'd like to discuss beyond the comprehensive plan, beyond design guidelines, and beyond the North Chestnut Gateway District. Happy to...
Great. Is he looking to meld ours, owning in with his out there?
Not meld it, but to make them compatible.
Compatible.
Yeah. I mean, you know, if, he liked the way our code looked. He liked that. He did not see the presentation that I saw, and that Tom said he probably has a copy of. But I want to get that to him, and to therefore, just him, would be good enough, so that he could see what we're working with. So, okay, sorry for the detour.
No, that was a good detour. So, you'll read more of the example that I started writing, I'll work more on it, and we'll talk about it more next.
Okay.
In the meantime, we did a little slideshow, really because it's so much easier to see something up on the screen than to have 75 pieces of paper. So I thought we could run through it, and see what you think. First, so Rich came into my office today, and brought me some pictures that he took around the village, I think mainly a parking lot. So I thought I would throw your slides up at the beginning, so we could talk about those.
Well, my point bringing this in was that, here's an example. This is an old barn, the red building you see on the right was an old barn. There used to be a house on the left, now vacant. And it's a parking lot. This is the bus station currently. So, you've got parking between the street and the building, which generally is not attractive.
Right.
But in this case, the use of the fencing softens it. We often try to use landscaping, but landscaping has a tendency to die, has a tendency to not be maintained, has a tendency to grow over sidewalks.
Plastic, plastic.
Plastic. Plastic was good back in the 80s when we needed the tax regulations, and you could depreciate your landscaping, but that's changed too. But this is an example, I thought that was pretty good, of how to hide the fact that there's a bunch of cars behind that fence, and you really, and I park that on the street, looking at it. So I thought this was one way we'd take a look at parking, where we're going to have to deal with buildings that already exist. We're going to have to deal with the fact that the only available parking may be between a building and the street. And how can we can soften, soften up the load? And I'm not a big proponent of softening the load with landscaping. Only because in most cases, I've found that the landscaping doesn't do the job that we want it to do. Whereas fencing, the height here is important. This isn't six-foot fencing. Can't have that. You don't need that to hide a car.
Isn't that six feet?
I didn't think it was six feet.
No, it's not six feet.
So I'm saying it's not six-foot fencing.
Oh, it's not?
It's not six-foot fencing. You don't need six-foot privacy fencing to hide the cars.
Well, especially if you're short. Make sure.
But, I mean, this is a good example of, you know, a streetscape. I meant to shoot across the street from it for the next slide, somehow I missed it when I was downloading it. Because that's a parking lot where there is nothing blocking it from the street. And it just, it's size of each other.
You mean the gas stations?
No, it's actually a...
No, a little shopping center.
A little shopping center in Dallas.
Oh, laundromat.
Yeah, ABC's laundromat.
Yeah, well, that's a good example of where the building should have been on the street.
Right.
The parking should have been behind.
Should have been behind, but that was built so long ago. From Frank Renato built that building, that was okay. But, you could cure a lot of its problem with the fence, and have it tie in.
Now, if we're building new, absolutely we should be on the street. But you're right, if we had existing buildings that are, have a parking lot in front, what do we do with them?
But barring, tearing buildings down, or...
Fire.
We don't have a lot of lots to infill. You know, and we just approved one that we had, it was a vacant lot, down by the bank. So there's really not much to infill, it was only, you know, maybe two, maybe three.
But I also see, you know, like Yanni's, for example, not the best building, didn't really fit in with that streetscape. The new owner said, "It doesn't work for what I want, so I want to build something new." Well, in theory, he could have said, "I want to build something new in the back of that lot." Now, that's not how our toll-free Main Street works, but, you know, that's something that we don't want to do. Next one?
This is the back of Being Jesus Looking From Church Street. And this is, I used to own these buildings, to see the backdrop here. And what we did was, back then, we always kind of said, "These may be our property lines, but we don't care. We need parking." So everybody just kind of let everybody park anywhere they wanted to park. And there's really no designed parking lot there. It's kind of haphazard. You can't do it with our current code, because if they came to us with our current code, we'd have to be talking about setbacks, we'd have to be talking about green-spaced areas. But yet, here is this parking lot that's hidden from all other views except this one. That's, you can stop in the picture, what a waste.
Yeah.
What a waste, right in downtown. So that's why I shot this one.
It's even a better view from the library.
This is a great view of what happened, but, actually I thought it was a better job to shoot it again. These are two buildings that are side by side on North Chestnut Street. One of them is Barnaby's, and the next one is a haircutting salon, I think apartments. But, the parking goes completely through, shares completely going around, maximum use of the land for parking, which is what we need down here. If that had adhered to zoning, that could not have been done.
Right.
Because you would have, again, had to be dealing with setbacks, you would have to be dealing with lot lines. Instead, what we've got is a great parking lot that functions well one way in, one way out, and on different properties. And they don't have to be the same owner.
Yeah, it comes in...
Or the same use.
It comes in off the side streets.
Uh-huh.
Which is, so it doesn't even, it's not a Main Street track.
It's a...
It's like your alley.
Yeah, it's almost...
It's like your alley, yeah, yeah. Now, look to the buildings to the right of it, I'm sorry. If you look to the buildings to the right, behind that red barn, there's a big vacant backyard. It's behind that little noodle shop there, whatever it is we approved.
Oh, yeah.
It's a big vacant backyard you can't get to.
You could put curtains in there.
You could get to it right there where those tents, those dumpsters are. Look at all that frontage that backs up to that big vacant backyard. That could be additional parking. Remember, people who have commercial buildings, land is not a depreciable asset. So in terms of investment, there's no depreciating value to it. The only depreciating value is in the assets of the buildings. So the depreciating value doesn't really matter that much. And they're much more concerned with things like getting customers into their store than they are with how pretty their backyard is, that it can't be seen by anybody else. But here's a landlord, again, who's got no way to put parking on his lot from the Church Street side, it's just impossible. But he certainly could have five, six, seven cars in his backyard, if zoning would allow him to do that. If the property owners around him were encouraged to do that. But our code discourages it, and we have a vacant lot back there.
What's the latest with the Naomi's?
Naomi's Cafe?
A great mystery to me.
I thought, I thought Jack, what's his name, wanted...
Jack.
I thought he was going to do something there.
So I'm not. I keep hearing dumpling place.
No, that's the noodle shop, which is...
Oh, yes, okay.
That has an opening.
Different spot, okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's just the back of that, but, yeah. Well, the rumor that I heard, I mean, we approved his permit a year?
For the noodle shop.
What, a year, for the noodle shop? And he never did it, never did it, never did it, and then I heard that he was interested in the Naomi building.
He owns the Naomi building.
Oh.
He built it.
Oh. Who's Naomi?
His daughter.
This, I thought, was a great example of taking a look at the lot lines and using it for another purpose other than parking, but eliminating lot lines and saying we can make this part of parks. There's a little park, really, even though it affects the bakery, even though people who use the bakery probably use it more, but the fact of it is that the bakery gets more business because it's got this little park with these tables. I'm sure there are a few people who bring their own coffee and donuts and sit there and have conversations, but more people buy their coffee and donuts from that little bakery than go sit at the table. But it's a great little park that could not be done according to zoning if we adhere to setbacks, if we adhere to lot coverage. I think we have unique situations when we look into downtown areas in terms of our lot coverage, in terms of the lot lines, and being able to maximize use of the land.
Didn't, in this case, didn't that work because either it was cooperation between property owners, or the same owner owns both?
Same owner owns both properties.
That's what I thought, right, okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Now, I own the building a few doors up on North Front Street, where we actually subdivided off, even though they're still attached, because it's zero lot line. And now it's a gallery, frame shop, and something else, number 5, lot. And, you know, at this point, I don't know, maybe someday the bicycle shop may want to stand alone from the bakery in ownership.
Right.
And, you know, why not? Again, the business owners is concerned with the physical plant, the asset. Why not let it stand alone? But our, again, if we look at our zoning, we read through our zoning, what our zoning allows, this is not encouraged.
I would call this a pocket park. And ideally, yeah, maybe, I want to go back and forth and think about it. Maybe that kind of thing could be allowed on the side of a lot, if, you know, if a building is pulled up to the street and there's room on the side to put a little pocket park, rather than parking, but ideally, you know, we would want the buildings closer to the road. But then certainly a park is not a bad thing, so.
I mean, I like the little outdoor cafe thing, I like the idea of, you know, the movie Boogert, putting his t-shirts out on the street. I like that concept, I, you know, that's me. It looks like a rag seller, I don't know. I like the idea of, brings a bizarre, I don't mean a bizarre weirdo, but a bizarre, I mean, sales thing going on down there.
So, did you say not only?
Not only, not limited to any owner.
Why don't you say you didn't exclude?
Didn't exclude, no, no, no.
Okay.
Okay, so, those are the pictures that Rich brought me today. Now, you're going to have to imagine that this was all on screen, and the back wall is also part of this slide. So, I looked at design standards versus non-design standards for a couple of these slides. Now, this is pretty obvious that McDonald's looks like McDonald's, and this McDonald's down here in Freeport, Maine, does not look like McDonald's. And what a beautiful McDonald's it is.
There's a great story behind that.
Which is?
Well, just how the town really had to stand their ground to get McDonald's to agree that they were going to save us to start building and put their restaurant in there. Once they did, it's now actually a showcase of what McDonald's...
I live in, it's beautiful.
Yep.
So, in the top photo, that's what we could see on the corner of North Chestnut and Main Street, where the sushi place could go, and that could go in.
Well, except that you would never get a drive-through restaurant inside that site, it's just too small.
And maybe they take off the place next door, too.
But, I mean, you know, the McDonald's was like, if you look at the one in Hyde Park, much less dramatic, but still, the Park McDonald's... Is this one our local one? Anyway, USA good.
Yeah.
Looked better than this one.
Look at the price again.
Yes, it was taken a little while ago. Then, attached garages, we've been talking about this a little bit. Where do we put the garages, in the front, in the side, in the back? If you're going to have an attached garage, that Snout Knows House on the top is not pretty. I don't even see where the house... I don't even see where the house, the old house with the red door, I don't even see where the house is. It's just a garage.
Oh, it's a prison?
Yeah. It's a subdivision, it's a new construction.
Oh, it's Canada!
In somewhere Canada, I don't know where.
Really?
And then this house at the bottom is still a new house, you know.
That's what you get for playing hockey without a helmet.
No way.
I'm not saying new construction is bad, but this new house on the bottom put their garage on the side facing the side lot, so you can't see the front door of the garage, and they put windows on the facade, so it looked like a little, you know, that's nice. That looks nicer, in my opinion. Now, I know we're just gonna argue with me about vinyl siding, but from a historic standpoint, vinyl siding is not good for historic houses. But from this standpoint, here we are in Saratoga, and the top picture you can see the great architectural elements of this garage, and the bottom picture you can see that they're just covering it right over with vinyl. Not only are they suffocating this house, and probably gonna have a lot of, this garage, probably gonna have a lot of water damage, but how awful that they're killing their detail by siding it over. I'm not saying we want to outlaw vinyl siding, if it was mine, you know, Rendeville, half spot. You know, perhaps then we want to emphasize architectural detail.
Well, you know, a lot of times you got to consider the cost of ownership, too. And owning a house that needs a paint job every five years and maintaining a house that needs a paint job every five years, especially when you're 63 years old, becomes a consideration.
Just wait.
It gets worse. I thought these were the golden years, right? So, I mean, vinyl has a lot of considerations, and maintenance is just one of them, the other, of course, is cost. The cost of redoing that barn and, you know, white painting or whatever is on there is far different from the cost of doing it in vinyl. On the other hand, if I was a fireman, I would outlaw vinyl, you know, or D, because it's just one of those items on houses you do not want to have when there's fire. However, most new construction, you don't want to be a fireman. Almost all new construction is done with gussets and cheaper timbers and...
That's why we have old construction.
Yep, except old construction doesn't have the energy value, so, I mean, everything's got its way to it. There is a place for vinyl, absolutely a place for vinyl. The problem is, can we make the decision as to where the good places are and where they're not?
And I'm not really saying that I think New Paul should outlaw vinyl. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that if we like architectural detail, then this isn't something that we want to encourage. Not just the vinyl, not the vinyl, but the covering up of the architectural details by a plank wall. I have more pictures later on, plank walls.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's more the point.
Yeah.
The material design.
Exactly.
Is that they're they're just covering up what is an interesting set of, you know, effort that was put into making this an interesting building, and it was taken all that away. Pardon, I mean, it could be covered with clapboards, it was...
Smell, yeah.
Whatever, cement, whatever.
Exactly. So without design standards, I found some great pictures. This little greenscape, green space says conservation area. It's good, isn't it?
And have a picture of a tree on there?
I think that's a picture of a tree.
What does that arrow point to?
I don't have that either, but, yeah, that's...
I like that.
This is in Virginia, this is actually a new building, and notice there's windows missing from all those shutters? Those are shutters.
Really? I thought those were... Those are slit windows, aren't they?
Yeah, I did, too, when I first looked at it. And closely, they didn't brick over the windows, because the brick line stays intact. They intended it to be like that.
Well, when I built the Ugonut Park, the housing project down in the Village, Senior Housing, if you look in the east wall, you'll see windows that don't exist, that were bricked over to a form where we actually used even different brick to fill it. They were never there, we built that building brand new. But we put in, because we couldn't, from a design standpoint, on the inside, make windows work there, we put into the design the windows and then bricked them over. So we have a complete brick facade with the old keys on the top and a different brick to show that this was... Which is what you would have done when you're reading an old factory. That was designed after old Potadina Tomato Factory that was there.
But that same wall has lots of windows.
Some windows.
The back walls.
On the back? No, 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 I'm talking about, I say west side, I meant the east side. Or Chestnut Street side.
Oh, okay.
And then here's a big box. It's a church in Indiana that is awful, in my opinion. It's a box with a couple details on it to make it look less of a box. Huh.
Big church.
Yeah. And here's another big box, now this one looks slightly better. This one is a Myers store in Illinois, and it, from a distance, you don't necessarily notice that those are faith, and that's just, you know, a big box.
Looks like Wall Street in Kingston, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So it's actually more of a place to fund the economy for something?
Now, I think it's really fake, I don't like fake architecture, but slightly better, but still not great. Brooke had asked me why I put this photo up, and I just think it's a really ugly building. I don't like whole barn construction, because I don't think it's great construction. But again, this has nothing to do with what our design standards are necessarily going to be. This is perhaps, you know, this huge parking lot in front, this is a municipal building.
Isn't this a firehouse?
Yeah, it looks like a firehouse.
I think it has a municipal on one side and a firehouse on the other, yeah, but still...
Where is North Front?
I don't know. Upstate, I would say.
Just outside of Scotts Park.
Somewhere over the rainbow.
Right? This is a really cool building. This is their library, but hey, and here we are on the street. I think we have a little, I think there's a street on the other side of those cars.
Yeah.
So if you get close, you can't use the door.
Esther, no, it's a strada.
Yeah. Which is defeating the whole purpose of having something on the street line where you can't use the door. I'm sure there's a reason, but...
Property security.
Right now, we could have buildings like this built in New Paul. Maybe we like this building, I used to work in a building that looked very, very similar to this, and I'm not used to it, but maybe we don't like, yeah, it's, maybe we don't like this.
Don't we have one over the college entrance?
What about?
Don't we have one over the college entrance?
Yeah, there's a bunch of buildings like that, actually, they just redid one of them.
But I'm not positive that this fits really in New Paul's. This is a, I don't know if it's an elementary school or a high school.
Wow.
Yeah, isn't that awful?
It's like a lockdown.
Yeah. Prison, yeah, prison slash elementary school.
Well, that's a sad, that's a sad conversation.
There you go.
So this guy, now, what do you think of this one?
It looks like he bought another house and put it on top of an existing house.
Right?
Looks like he got several and put it on top of it.
And what is the main thing that we don't like about this house?
Oh, man.
The height, the ugliness?
The height, materials, the general mass.
Just so many things.
So I found online, the comment about this house, the comments about this house was, were, wow, that house is too tall. It doesn't fit in our community, it's too tall, was the main argument. But check this house out. That's the same height, just down the street.
Yeah. Nobody's complaining about that.
Exactly, exactly, so...
Can you go back to that one for a second?
Uh huh.
So what do you think that was, an old grain elevator, and someone tried to convert it into housing?
I don't know.
Can't be, not in that part of Saratoga. There was never anything but housing in Saratoga.
Oh, really?
It looks like the add church.
Union, it's right off of the main grade of Saratoga.
I guess, well, hopefully it's looking good.
It's for sale, I think.
Doesn't it look like it's been added, added on to?
Yeah. I, I hope that it's been added on to, because if that was the original intent, that's wrong. But now, while we can't do four-story buildings in New Paul's, I think we would get some complaints about this building, I think we would get a lot less complaints about this building. Because it's designed well. I don't know that this one fits in New Paul's either, but I'm just saying, design matters to some degree.
I'd be home in the Addams Family or something.
I think that's the end. Yeah, that's the end of my slideshow, so. Just a thousand...
You know, you probably say, why don't we have four-story buildings in New Paul's? Other than the college.
I think I left my hat below the glass.
I don't know.
It'd probably start as a fire station, right?
I would say so, started, we'd have the equipment to handle it. But certainly, you know, you take a building like the, what's it now, Wells Fargo Bank downtown?
Yeah.
You know, the big square, sturdy box, limestone side, why couldn't you put three floors of apartments on top of that? Except the code says no. I would imagine the height thing came in because of, yeah, the problem. I mean, the interesting one is that blue building across the street from Tokyo Sushi, the blue office building?
Oh, yeah.
When I was a kid, there was a fire, there was a fire in the movie theater that was there, it burned to the ground. By the way, the movie Elko was playing when the fire was... Burnt to the ground. Carol's Corporation, which was an hamburger stand, came in and built a building there. Eventually, somebody came in, bought that and rehabbed and rebuilt and started to do that, but if you look at that building, and if you look, it doesn't have a peak. It's got a flat top where the top triangle would be. Because the architect made a mistake and it was over 35 feet.
Oh, no kidding?
Chopped it off.
So it just got the top off.
No problem.
It's like, no problem. It doesn't look strange, but it's interesting that those things were so written in concrete. That, especially now that we have equipment, obviously, because we have other high-rise buildings in New Paul's.
Well, we have the university.
Yeah.
But we didn't, university doesn't have to look at our code.
So if you...
No, I'm just saying, but we have fire equipment nowadays, if you handle things, it's a university.
So if you did, like, form-based zoning, which I don't fully understand exactly how that works, could you eliminate things like maximum heights and so forth and still create, and still, the planning board would still have the ability to to have some oversight as to what building sizes were there, maybe, is that how it works?
I'm not, I'm not positive you would want to, or if you would eliminate height restrictions altogether, but I know that, yeah, it's much more, let's look at every use and structure individually and figure out how it's gonna work best.
Is that, would that drive developers crazy, though? If that was, if guidelines are set up like that, without really knowing much about development? Does that make it really complicated for planning boards and developers to sit down? Does it discourage developers necessarily, or does it in some ways make it easier for them?
In some ways it makes it easier, and in some ways it makes it easier for the planning board to say, you know, this is what we want. It takes some getting used to, I've never worked in a municipality with that kind of something either, but it would be good. It's an option.
I would subscribe to the concept that good plans should never be denied.
Never be what?
Denied. If it's a good plan, it should be built.
What about...
But having to write that zoning, which is what you're talking about there.
That's what, I mean, we're so constrained by numbers, and I, and I and I don't know enough about form-based zoning to know, does that fall too far over the side of aesthetics? Or does it provide a great, something, some sort of hybrid?
I think it's a hybrid.
What about floating zones?
Because, yeah, floating zones.
Because in that way, you can have, you can say that a particular use could be allowed, but it's not in, it's not in a particular spot, so if a developer were to come and say they wanted to build something that was particularly nice, that we didn't want to put in the code, then you could revert to the floating zone and say, oh, we'll use a floating zone here, and then...
Like Thai houses?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, also remember, we've always got something called the ZVA. Who has a lot more... We got a ZVA member here, you have to be careful, I say. They got a lot more design power than they, at least I believe it, than they ever use.
Well, they have a little bit of bargaining power.
Well, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
When I was doing more development than I'm doing nowadays, the ZVA had the ability to sit back and grant me my wishes. But it was often at me expecting theirs. So, you know, they wanted it blue, I would say, what shade? I think, you know, ZVAs have gotten away from that somewhat, to say, we either approve or we disapprove. Not my idea of the ZVA, my idea of the ZVA, if somebody comes to us with a plan that we like, that we could turn to the ZVA as our allies and say, look, we can't approve this, but we've looked at it, we think this is a really good plan. What do you think? If you put these restrictions on the developer, make him do this, this, and this, we think it'll work in the planning, what do you think? They've got the ability to do it, they're like their own little court.
They are a court. They're legislating.
They are.
Well, that's interesting, yeah, I don't see the ZVA that way, but I have had the same experience that you have had. And I sort of would just assume give that ability to the planning board and have the ZVA deal with more what I guess I'm used to dealing with, which is issues that... I mean, I understand to deal with things like, oh, we need to go up to 43 feet, and this only lasts 35 feet, you know, we grant us that, but...
I like the idea of the form-based zoning and guidelines, that's kind of intriguing. Because we're trying to if we're trying to impress guidelines as having aesthetics, that might be a way to do it. Just because it seems to be more oriented in that direction.
But that is the ZVA.
Well, I understand. But this might, this might give more clear direction to the ZVA about what we think in terms of general planning.
Yeah, I don't know, I have to learn more about that.
That would be interesting to find out more about it.
Maybe if you had design standards for a particular zone and then form-based zoning, so then you couldn't... It's just fuzzy to me how spot zoning could possibly apply into form-based zoning.
We're also a small village with, you know, like I said, not a lot of undeveloped land, that's for sure. We're extremely fortunate in that art, commercial, and business districts are so strong. I go out and do work out towards Elmira, it's a different land, you know, go out into Binghamton even. It's a different country. You know, we talk about, you know, having a vacancy on Main Street, can you name two? Well, you know, just in the best of economic times, small businesses go in and out like crazy, in the best of economic times. And the post-war...
Rarely.
We have vacancies.
Rarely.
I, you know, came down Main Street today to watch them put up the new sign for our new, another...
Bangkok Cafe, right?
What's it gonna be?
Called Bangkok Cafe, it's right next to the other Thai restaurants, but two in a row.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I missed that one.
Well, that's why we need it. God love all of their doors, I mean, he knows...
The old Romaldi's. Dino's Building.
So, but, you know, but you can look at this, a couple of this...
Is that the same people?
I mean, we have a couple of key areas that are not heavily developed, I mean, we have an area right behind here. We have, you know, I would look at it as actually this parcel, the village parking lot on Platakill, the empty lot behind it, and then if you want to get even more, you could even look at some of the area along Inis Avenue. So we have a fairly large stretch of land there that could be redeveloped, developed, and so forth.
We have W., we have land up near Senior Housing, what's it called?
Woodland.
Are we even remotely considering those two areas for commercial use?
No.
No, but then, but we do have the North Chestnut area, which is now, you know, the potential for going from 40,000 square foot building lots to whatever is a quarter of an acre. Is a significant change. So that could, that's a stretch that could, you know, with, hopefully with these standards that are there now, could could end up being something if, you know, if and when developers come in. No, but you're right, I mean, there isn't a lot of open space that is left. But I also feel like with the commercial stuff, that we also have to sort of think about not so much what's gonna happen in the next 10 years. not so much what's gonna happen in the next 10 years or 20 years, but what's gonna happen over a longer period of time, 50 years or something like that, and how will it evolve?
And design standards aren't only to worry about new construction, but they're also to protect what we have. That we like.
You know, and I, I mean, your ideas about, you know, one of your things that you're crusading is trying to deal with parking issues and shared parking and stuff like that, and I, and that can be done on a one-point basis with all the existing properties that we have on our commercial streets. So opportunities to do that would be really valuable.
I mean, New Pauls is never known for its mansion housing, but we've got a couple of mansion-type properties right on North Chestnut Street that, how are they gonna get, how are they gonna be developed? It's kind of scary.
Right, and ones that are occupied.
And what's gonna happen to, it's a big parcel, I'm gonna cross the street from Barnaby's to the big red house. You know, it's sitting there vacant.
Yeah, that's an important.
I know. Right now, our current zoning isn't very friendly to saving that building.
Is that still B2? It's still a little bit B2 district, I think.
Right, that's B2, right, yeah. Right behind you, I.
That doesn't land.
The big red house.
Landmark doesn't really mean that much.
There's a lot next to it is empty, it's part of the house.
Local landmarking would.
Local landmark.
That's what I meant, that's what I meant, local start reservation. Barnaby's is, and that actually provides a modicum of protection for that, because it's less than 100 feet away, so.
But yet Barnaby's, in its tenure of ownership, sold off its big vacant parking lot to a karate school. The big vacant parking lot that got its permit to make it into a two-story restaurant. It then turned around when nobody was looking, it sold it off to a karate school and developed a karate school there.
That's all right.
What happened?
No, it happened, but it's not worth it.
Oh, not right, it happened.
It's correct, but it's very unfortunate.
Very unfortunate.
Okay, folks.
I have no real homework for next week. Keep, plug along. Send me edits if you have them or whatever, then I'll keep writing as well.
And I'll get whatever George has to say about this in the next day or so. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
That was, sorry, let's do it again, have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, John. Second?
Aye.
Thank you, John. Call in favor.
Aye, thank you.